Perfect. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:00. We will go into the adoption of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Nobody else got anything to add? Motion to adopt the agenda?
I did.
No, sorry. Question by Candace.
Moved by Councilor Meister that the agenda be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Regular meeting minutes? Any corrections, admissions? Motion by Counselor Cutler to accept the meetings? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler that the regular meeting minutes of June 26, 2023 be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Passed. We will open up a public hearing for Bylaw 1761, the land use bylaw amendment, at 7:02. Abe?
Sure. Okay, so this is a public hearing for Land Use Bylaw 1761, which is a proposal to amend the Land Use Bylaw 1525 to re-designate lands for the purpose of a mixed-use, commercial and residential development. You can see the property is outlined on your screen there, counsel. Prior to this, this bylaw amendment has already received first reading, and prior to second and third readings, it has to have a public hearing, so. Notice of the public hearing was circulated, and to the surrounding neighborhood, administration has not received any comments or questions, formal comments or questions from the public. However, there may be members of the public here who wish to speak to this, so that's why we're having the public hearing, and just see if there's any members of the public that want to speak to this.
All right. Do we have any members of the public? Look at that, we do.
Yeah, I live next door to this property.
Ma'am, can you?
Yeah, if you want to sit up to the... Thanks, Counselor Schlossberger. They'll get you all set up there.
Hi, my name is Lynn Harrington. I live at 208, which is next door to this property, and I have some concerns about, is it going to be properly inspected? Because when I was in it last, they had two-pronged outlets instead of three-pronged, and I'm worried about a fire, actually.
Right.
So I'd like to know if it's going to be inspected.
Let's see if you have...
Yeah. At this point, what we're really here to do is to consider whether or not this land use is suitable for the area. And in terms of inspecting the property, if there are going to be any significant renovations, there will have to be a permit process in place. I don't know what renovations might be required and what plans the current owner might have for that property. So it's really, I think it's beyond the scope of this public hearing to answer those questions.
Well, as a resident there, I don't think the parking would be a problem or anything like that, but that was mainly the concern I had, is the building itself, and in my opinion, has not been properly maintained. But, okay, that was the concern I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else from the public that would like to address? Members of council? Then I would like to close public hearing for Bylaw 1761 at 7:05. And we will continue on to number one, Bylaw 1761, Land Use Bylaw Amendment.
Okay, so this is for second and third readings of the proposed bylaw amendment. Again, rezoning from R1, single-detached residential, to C1, retail commercial, for future commercial residential uses. As discussed at the last council meeting, there were no concerns from the Development Office or from the Planning Office, ORSC, about the proposed usage. It's adjacent to the commercial zoning area, and so is a logical fit. Not a lot of concerns, as the resident previously said, about parking. There should be ample parking. And again, didn't have any feedback from the public, so that bylaw is on the agenda for second and third readings.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns? If I can get a... Anybody willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for second reading.
Second motion by Counselor Cutler. Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to give Bylaw Number 1761, a land use bylaw amendment, second reading.
All in favor? Passed. Do we got a motion for third? Counselor Schlossberger? Question?
Moved by Counselor Schlossberger to give Bylaw Number 1761, a land use bylaw amendment, third and final reading.
All in favor? Passed. Item number two, the Bylaw Number 1762, Water Sewer Bylaw Amendment. Abe?
Yeah, this one's a bit of an info-brief update for council, that we are in water restrictions, water shortage response plan currently, and we are also seeking an amendment of the water sewer utility bylaw. So just to review with council, as part of the process that town went through in 2020 to get water licenses for the MD and for the golf course, the town was required to have a water shortage response plan in place. That was completed by MPE Engineering, so the town and the MD both have these water restriction, water shortage response plans. And we are currently mobilizing that plan due to low water levels in Pine Cooley. So, upper environment is currently releasing water from Pine Cooley because they have demands for irrigation users, and they have water flows that they have to maintain in the Willow Creek for their users. Soon, however, we will hit the point where they will stop, the provincial government will stop releasing into Willow Creek because, to conserve water for the municipal purposes. That level is 1044. Will be there within a few days. And so at that point in time, no more water is released into the creek, and the rest of the water in the Pine Cooley is reserved for municipal purposes, municipal consumption. So we'll be heading into stage three currently. We have been actively notifying the public. Hopefully, the message is getting out of there, seeking people to conserve water primarily on non-essential water use. And we have also been actively meeting with the MD, with our engineers, and with the province about the water shortage response plan, discussing how to implement different stages as the water levels continue to drop, which they will. And so we're actively monitoring it and working through it. And we will be communicating with the public every step of the way. So, again, that was the info-brief that we wanted to share. The next item, there are some fines attached to our water and sewer utility bylaw that are connected with the water shortage response plan and non-contravention of that plan. At the time when the water shortage response plan was added to the bylaw, the fines were just adopted, the existing fine structure was adopted, and so, which is $500 for the first offense and $2,000 for the second offense. And when we reviewed our processes and policies with the water shortage response plan, administration felt that that was a little bit too punitive for violating the water shortage response plan. And looking around neighboring municipalities, the fine structures somewhere around, comparable fine structures are somewhere around 150 for the first offense and 250 for the second and subsequent offenses. We feel that's still adequate fine structure in place, and we would propose changing that fine structure accordingly. So that's what's on the agenda.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, adds? Counselor Kettles?
I appreciate administration looking into this, and, yeah, the old fines would be pretty high, but I'm just wondering if we need three levels. Like, you know, I'm all good with the warning, that makes sense to me, and then after that, let's just have one fine, just keep things clean, but that's my thought.
I was kind of thinking levels as well, but I was thinking like stages, different rates for different stages of the water restrictions, but I think these are probably, would discourage people from watering when they're not supposed to be.
Not as much as 500 and 2,000.
Well, no.[673.24][673.24](Laughter). We'll just have Abe's.
Don't drink your water. Don't mess with it.
No, exactly, yeah.
All right. Lynn, if that's it, can we get, somebody want to make some motions for the first one there? Counselor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to give Bylaw Number 1762, Water Sewer Bylaw Amendment, first reading.
All in favor? Opposed? Passed? Anybody like to give a second? Counselor Schlossberger? Question?
Moved by Counselor Schlossberger to give Bylaw Number 1762, a Water and Sewer Utility Bylaw Amendment, second reading.
All in favor? Opposed? Passed. And, third one?
So, we actually need a motion for unanimous consent to give this bylaw third and final reading at the same meeting. It has to be unanimous.
Okay. Is there a motion to consider giving the third reading a unanimous one? Question?
Who did that?
Counselor Meister, sorry.
So moved by Counselor Meister for unanimous consent to consider third reading for Bylaw Number 1762, a Water and Sewer Utility Bylaw Amendment at the same meeting.
All in favor? Opposed? Passed? Third reading? Counselor Schlossberger? Question?
Moved by Counselor Schlossberger to give Bylaw Number 1762, Water and Sewer Utility Bylaw Amendment, third and final reading.
All in favor? Opposed? Passed. Number three, some correspondence, the Honorable Rick McIver from the Minister of Municipal Affairs. Abe?
Correspondence from the minister indicating the capital allotments, provincial capital allotments, as well as a federal on here as well, for 2023. Nothing unexpected here.
Perfect. Take that for information. Number four, correspondence, the Municipal District of Willow Creek. Abe?
A couple months ago, council had a delegation requesting relocation of Airport Monument that's currently located out at the airport, and so the gentleman's name was Mr. Gary Watson. He was requesting to have that monument transferred into town over by Centennial, just concerns of theft and general condition of the plaque, was looking to do a little remediation on the plaque, I believe. So, following that delegation, the town reached out to the MD and various other stakeholders to inquire about if there were any concerns, and so the MD has responded that they believe it should remain out there, and so this is just their correspondence back to the town. Essentially, I've met with Gary after this. Administratively, I would consider this to be between Gary and the MD now, Mr. Watson, I should say, and the MD. That's my perspective on it, and he may or may not connect with him in the future to see if there's an appetite in the future. But it's something that we were committed to assisting him with. I felt there was a good support from council here at this table. We were committed to assisting him with it, but again, it doesn't look like it's got support elsewhere, so leaving with them.
Perfect. Take that for information as well. Number five, correspondence, the Clarison Art Society. Abe?
Yeah, so we have a request from the Clarison Art Society. They're looking to paint a mural in Ring Rose Park. If you recall, week and a half, pardon me, a year and a half ago, there was a big windstorm, and we used to have some panels, the town used to have some panels up there, and there was some murals on there. They're looking to actually paint a physical mural on the, in the same location as before. Going to be hard for the wind to blow this one off, but they've attached a rendering of what the mural is going to look like. Is it Taking Flight is the name of the mural? And I'll just pull it up here. It's quite an attractive mural. And so I believe this generally follows the contours of the building, spans from one end to the other, and so they are looking for funding, they're seeking funding from the community. They have already saved a significant amount, but they're a little bit shy. They've reached $6,500, and it's going to be a $10,000 project. So they're looking to complete this, I believe, at the beginning of September or by the beginning of September. And they have sponsorship information that I'll go to in a moment here, but they're looking for a couple of things from the town, which is assistance with prepping the site. There's some old, there's just a bit of hardware in place from the old panels that they need assistance with, possibly pruning some trees, potentially cutting down a tree. And so that's the request, is for the town's assistance in the site prep, and as well to contribute to the sponsorship as they continue to fundraise. And there's also a request to take down one of the trees in the park, which you'll see is the one on the left here. My advice was that we, administratively, we wouldn't be supporting that, as we feel that the trees in the parks are important features of the parks, and take a priority over a mural as much as appreciate the art society's efforts. So that was my conversation with the art society. And anyways, so that's the gist of it, council.
Perfect. Counselor Kettles?
So, am I looking at this right? So the trees would really only affect the right end, then, of the graphics, so the rest of it would be pretty visible? So, I mean, it would be, it would still look pretty good. I mean, it's not blocking the whole thing, just a little bit of that right-hand side panel.
Yeah, and maybe, I don't know how many feet that is, maybe 10, 12 feet or something it looks like.
Okay.
It is, it would be an impedance to seeing the mural, of course, but, yeah, I don't know. It's just this tree here.
Counselor Cutler?
Again, thanks to the art society for taking a look at this and stuff. My only, one of my other only concerns is the idea around the upkeep and the maintenance afterwards. We've had this before, where we've had murals on the side of buildings, and then they start to fall apart, and then we're trying to find somebody to refix them or recreate them or maintain them. I mean, Ring Rose Park is a beautiful park. I'd like to see it to what it can be without the worry about upkeep and taking care of it, but, again, yeah, I wasn't in favor of removing the trees. I don't know how that would affect the mural or what they'd want to do, but...
Do we know? I can't remember if I read it or not. Who is going to be doing the painting? Is it, did I read local artists?
No, some guy from Calgary, Doug Dretter.
Okay.
He did one of the unknowns, I think.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? No? Take it for...
Well, I think there's an ask here.
Yep, yep, there's a, there is a funding ask, and there is, there is an ask to remove that tree as well.
Oh. Carmel? Sorry about that, I was reading it as court, oh, I'm it, sorry.
Can I say something else? I'm not allowed to.
Okay, so what do we want to ask for first?
Well, maybe talk about a sponsorship, that's probably the easiest question to answer. Yeah, sorry, I jumped ahead there. Let's get it back up.
I'm looking for a motion to...
I'll make a motion for a $1,000 donation on a growth level.
Big or any? Question?
Okay, so, sorry to be difficult, but as part of this, there, she's also, the art society's also asking for, sorry.
Oh, and?
The art society's also asking for assistance from Public Works in order to move, remove the hardware and to prepare the wall. So, I mean, that would be an in-kind donation, but it should probably be part of the same motion rather than making two separate motions for this, for assistance.
That's correct. I meant to say that with my motion is the $1,000 donation and the...
And the assistance from Public Works. So, moved by...
But not the tree.
Well, the tree.
I didn't say tree.
So, moved by Counselor Cutler to support the Clarison Art Society's Ring Rose Park mural project with a donation of $1,000, plus provide assistance from the Town of Clarison Public Works Department to remove hardware from the wall and with wall preparation.
Sound good? All in favor of that? Passed. And what was up?
If there's no appetite to remove that tree, no motions required.
Counselor Schlossberger?
I'll make a motion that we remove that tree.
If we don't get water, we remove it some.
I don't know anything about trees. Can it be relocated?
Not, I don't know, not an arborist. I would suspect that big probably would be difficult, but I don't know.
Inside, we need a space.
Yeah, there's...
Oh, so, fair enough. I think Green's done typing.
Typically, when you move that, they're going to die anyways, so... No, no, that's covered.
So to allow, oh, that's right.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Schlossberger to allow for removal of one tree in Ring Rose Park as recommended in order to provide clear sightlines for the Clarison Art Society's mural project.
All in favor? Opposed? Defeated? And that's got everything. Number six, correspondence, Cynthia Wanamaker. Abe?
So this is correspondence addressed to council. Two-fold purpose of the correspondence. One is requesting town to remove the grass around the new town office grounds, purpose being that it's not environmentally sustainable as opposed to alternative surfaces, park surfaces that require less watering and maintenance. And the second is to request a review of the town's, one of the town's bylaws discussing dangerous and unsightly properties, specifically, specifically the requirement to have grass at less than six inches, six inches or less. So there is a bunch of information and background information here, council, on this individual's perspective on lawn maintenance and why, why they're making this request. Would suggest that taking out the grass around the town office is a pretty drastic thing after the town invested a lot of money in the grounds and the maintenance thereof. However, the second request, reviewing the bylaw and looking to other municipalities possibly that might have some policies in place for better environmental stewardship, sustainability of their grounds, we could definitely look into that. But if you want us to rip the grass up, give us the motion, and we'll start tomorrow. I'm just kidding.
Does anybody have anything they want to add to that? No? All right.
Oh, but we are given direction to council, to administration to look into Bylaw 1714.
Are we? Is that a motion? Okay.
He just mentioned that they'd be able to do that, so I'd like to give directions looking at 1714.
Green, uh...
Let's give her...
Green has a suggested motion here.
Moved by Counselor Cutler to direct administration to research municipal landscaping policies to encourage environmentally sustainable, friendly practices, and to bring the findings back to council at a future meeting for discussion.
That's exactly what I said.
That's what I heard.
Right? Perfect. Thanks, Green. All in favor? Opposed? One? Passed.
Okay, one more thing. Can I say one more thing?
Counselor Cutler?
On item one, then, when she's talking about, I mean, when we built the town office, when we did that, we did a bunch of investigation on different landscaping options. We looked at different models and different processes, and we decided on the grass, and yeah, it's a little easier on maintenance rather than having the shale and the wood chips and those types of things. So it's not that we didn't go in, it's not that we didn't hear it, but yeah, it's something that we looked at and we've investigated, and so it's not something we just did on the whim, so.
Thank you. Number seven, correspondence, Counselor Brad Schlossberger. Abe?
I'll, I'll let Counselor Schlossberger discuss this one, if you're up for it.
Counselor?
That's my letter of resignation as a town councilor, effective tomorrow, and I am running for mayor.
Effective tomorrow?
That's it.
Short and sweet, congratulations.
Congratulations, good luck, council.
Perfect. All right, we'll take that for information. Wasn't sure if anybody else wanted to say anything. Chime in.
Nobody else wanted to.
All right. Number eight, request for decision, the Aquatics Center. All right. Number eight, request for decision, the Aquatic Center Advanced Training. Abe?
Yep. So the Clarison Aquatic Center has had, coming out of COVID-19, has had difficulties with staffing. It's not an uncommon thing for aquatic centers to have issues staffing coming out of COVID-19 as people, as pools were shut down and people had to pivot elsewhere and to, to find jobs. So it has been difficult to attract, to attract lifeguards since that time. Ongoing challenges at the aquatic center. And so their recreation director has proposed that we cut the fees in half, the training required for lifeguards on a one-time basis only in hopes of getting people in and trained. There is a training schedule outlined there for the fall where she is anticipating a number of lifeguards to be leaving. And so hoping to grab a few people and through an incentive package, cutting the cost for training, overhead costs. So it's not the, if council approves this, it would not be the only municipality that's done this. There are other municipalities that are doing this as well. So I guess that's, that's it, I guess. Just looking for some incentives for lifeguard training.
Anybody have any, counselor?
I'll make that motion.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Schlossberger to accept the proposed special half-off pricing for bronze medallion, bronze cross, national lifeguard and life-saving swim instructor at the Clarison Aquatic Center as requested.
Counselor Cutler?
I, I like to promote within, but I also like to promote our program. No one in here says anything about a retention signing. If we give them the half-price training that they're going to work at the Clarison Aquatic Center, say, two years, there's no, right? There's nothing in that. This is just a half-price for anybody who wants to come and take a half-price thing. So how is this going to alleviate our hiring process if it's not to retain for our pool?
Well, yeah, we don't have guarantees in place here that they'll stay at this pool.
So I hear, what I read in here, and this is, what I read in here is everybody's suffering. So we're going to train 13 people from here to close its pass and staff all the other pools at a half-price discount and we're still going to be in charge. But there's no signing incentive. No, hey, if you come work for the Clarison Aquatic Center and are a staff member, you get half-price training, right? That's what I read?
There is no requirement to work at the Clarison Pool. That's correct.
However, there is a thing in place that if they work for so many hours, they do get that training money back. I forget the number of hours, but it's, that's something like if, if they stay, come and work at the Clarison Pool and they stay for a certain amount of time.
But this program here that we have and offering half-off.
So they'll get the half-off back.
But it could be for anybody from Southern Alberta, not just for staffing in Clarison Aquatic Center.
All right. All in favor of Counselor Schlossberger's motion?
Still try something.
Opposed? Hmm.
Defeated.
Defeated? No?
Yep.
Almost three-three. I apologize. I was looking for, I apologize.
Here we go. Number nine, request for decision, the Fair Days road closure?
So each day Clarison Fair Days includes road closures for the street market, the parade and the drift demonstration. Fair Days this year, August 10th to August 13th. So there's two, two motions here, council, we're looking for is approval of the Drift Club road closures as well as the road closures for the parade. We are going to be able to use the same old parade route that we have previously, parade staging grounds. We reached out to the new owner and he has said, go ahead, use it for another year. So tough decisions can be delayed for another year. So we look for the usual motion there. In, in addition, we are requesting road closures for the drift demonstration. There was some concern at the last council meeting about the hours. I think it was 4:30 to 7 was the request. Is the sound going to be that long? Because sound is a concern for residents in that area. And they're really just limiting the actual drifting from 5:30 to 7. So it's an hour and a half and that is in line with what it was last year. The, the extra time that we're requesting is just for setup and whatnot. So I, I believe it ran in an hour and 20 even last year. So it wasn't even an hour and a half and the expect, expectation is about the same this year. So it's a bit more information for you on the timing of that event?
See, do we have any questions, comments, concerns about either? Counselor Cutler?
Even at an hour and a half, I'm not sure that addresses the concerns that we had with, with the noise factor. I mean, I think that was, I think an hour and a half was a long time for those people to put the...
No, I, like I said, I agree too. I love the Drift Club. I promote everything. It's just, like I said, a lot of concerns from some people about the time. So let's see. Brought it up.
Only other concern I heard from last year, and I had somebody take me through a drive-through of the neighborhood and so on, is a request, there was a concern that there's many seniors that may not take the information from the paper or the website and the potential for administration to actually do a, do a phone call out down that, it'd be 52nd, just to inform those residents of, of the time period and let them know what's going on during that, that time period because there were some confused seniors on, on that day. If we could do that, I'd be in support.
Yeah, we can definitely do that and send out notices, phone calls and even maybe double notice, phone call and even mailouts.
Perfect. Anybody would like to make some motions? Counselor Carlson, question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to approve a road closure on Second Street East, north of UFA to 47th Avenue East, including the south end of 2A Street East on August 14th, 2023, for the Rocky Mountain Drift Club drag racing demo, on the condition that excessive noise is to be restricted between the hours of 5:30 and 7:00 PM and also that residents in the area are notified prior to the event.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Passed. Counselor Cutler?
I'll make the max motion for the parade route.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to approve the 2023 Clarison Parade Route and Highway 520 road closure from 8th Street West to Second Street West between the hours of 10:30 and 11:30 AM on Saturday, August 12th, 2023.
All in favor? Passed. Number 10, request for decision, by-election, counselor. Abe?
Yeah, so with the resignation of Counselor Schlossberger, we will need to hold a election for counselor. We're currently having one for mayor and proposing the same date and time as the mayoral election. And we have a motion here just directing administration to designate the day for the election in conjunction with the existing by-election that's happening.
Anybody have any questions? No? Counselor Schlossberger?
I'll make that motion.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Schlossberger to hold a by-election for the position of counselor on Monday, September 18th, 2023, to be held in conjunction with the mayoral by-election, with all the previous motions passed for the by-election at the regular meeting of council on June 12th, 2023, including location and times, advanced pool, institutional vote and returning officer to be in effect for the counselor by-election.
All in favor? Opposed? Passed. Number 11, an information brief, the gravel, sorry, the Range Gravel Experience. Abe?
Yeah, so council previously had this item on the agenda back in January, I believe. But this is just an info brief that the Range Gravel Cycling Race is coming up. The Saturday starts at nine o'clock, pardon me, at Centennial, Centennial Park, and nine o'clock start time. And the event has grown quite a bit. Got a lot of traction, if you will, throughout the region and is now probably, they're expecting about 300 riders, which is up significantly. And we just gave you some information here on, on the race itself and just wanted to draw some attention to it because there's been a lot of planning in place. And certainly we, I know that the event organizers and administration appreciates council's willingness to host in whatever way they can and participate. And so there's going to be a beer garden and some barbecuing down there as well. Should be a great, great day. So I think it's about eight or nine hours expected, expected race time for, for most racers.
Wow.
So they go up, start at the Centennial, head up into the hills and come back down eventually.
I remember when this was an idea.
Right? Remember that? When you had those, and last year was such a hit. No, it's, it's grown really good.
Jeez. Perfect. Anybody want to say anything towards it or no? Good. All right. Information brief, number 12, council committee reports?
Get there.
Yes, if you had like a little button you could just push and it would take you there, right?
It would be. Nope. There you go.
Oh, Councilman Meister.
I am not saying anything.
Wear your best costume. That's all I got to say. For real. Dress up for Fair Days. Like your good old days.
Anybody want to add anything to there? They didn't get a chance to? No? Perfect. Number 13, information brief, council resolution status? Anybody got any questions, concerns? No, everything looks good. Perfect. Number 14, adoption of information items? Counselor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to adopt the information items that's presented.
All in favor? Passed. We will now go in camera, but I'll make a, first, I'm going to motion to...
I'll make the motion to go into in camera.
So I said? Sorry. Motion to go in camera, sorry. Counselor Meister, question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to go in camera at 7:44 PM for the following items, A, B, and C personnel for Section 17.
Thank you. Camera's off. Can I get a motion to come out of in camera? Counselor Carlson, question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to come out of in camera at 8:21 PM.
And we got one motion on the table?
All in favor?
Oh, in camera, sorry, sorry. All in favor of coming out of in camera? Passed.
I would like to make a motion.
Yeah. Jeez.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to, for item discussed in camera.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to approve the human resources matter as discussed in closed session.
All in favor? Passed. Need a motion to adjourn? Counselor Carlson? Motion to adjourn at 8:23 or 4:00. All in favor? We're adjourned. Camera off, please.